Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lunedary Town Council meeting. Today is Monday, November 6, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands when they reach under God in this law, liberty, and justice. Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. We had a longtime employee pass away. Ms. Libby Caniel, moment of silence for her and her family. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we open with public comment. If anyone who would like to make comments and approach the council, now would be the
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive, Lunedary, New Hampshire. I took an oath when I became a state rep, and my oath said, along with everyone else who took this oath, "I do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a state representative according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulation of this Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God." Everyone took that oath. On October 26, we were in session, and at the end of that session, a young representative stood up and put the legislative body on notice that we need to uphold that Constitution, that oath to uphold the Constitution. I bring this to your attention tonight for a couple of reasons. The first reason is that part of your duties, as under Article 38 of the Constitution, "A frequent recurrence to the fundamental principles of the Constitution and a consistent adherence to justice, moderation, temperance, industry, frugality, and all the social virtues are indispensable necessary to preserve the blessings of liberty and good government. The people ought therefore to have particular regard to all of those principles in the choice of their officers and representatives, and they have a right to require of their lawgivers and magistrates an exact and constant observance of them in the formation and execution of laws necessary for the administration of government." Basically, that says you can't waste the people's money, okay? So, being put on notice, there is a large group of not legislators, but people who we answer to, a large group, who have asked legislators to stand up and defend the Constitution in many, many areas. And one of the most important areas is in election integrity. There are multiple notifications going out to different bodies to be put on notice that they need to uphold the laws. I bring this to your attention tonight because, according to Article 32 of the Constitution of the State of New Hampshire, and I read it to you, "The meeting for the choice of governor, council, and senators shall be warned by warrant from the selectmen and governed by a moderator, who shall, in the presence of the selectmen, whose duty shall be to attend, an open meeting, receive the votes of all the inhabitants of such towns and wards present and qualified to vote for senators, and shall, in said meetings, in the presence of said selectmen and of the town or city clerk at said meeting, sort and count the said votes, and make a public declaration, therefore, with the name of every person voted for, for the number of votes for each person, and the town or city clerk shall make a fair record of the same at large." The voting machines are illegal under the Constitution of the State of New Hampshire. On November 29, the Supreme Court is hearing testimony to that. It has been three years in the making to hear testimony to that. They are illegal under the Constitution. There are RSAs that are allowing them and have allowed them since 1979, but the Constitution of the State of New Hampshire supersedes any RSA. Therefore, I am asking you to perhaps pick what machine you would like to use, but I'm asking you because of the frugality of your position not to spend any of the taxpayers' money until you find out what the outcome of these notices to the Secretary of State and the Supreme Court judgment is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, everybody. Bob Slater, 1 Stonehenge Road. Just a couple of things I'd like to hit up as one of your school board members. The taxpayers were nice enough to fund a portable that we moved a program to up at North School at the beginning of the school year, and we had some technicalities, per se, on hooking up sprinklers and fire alarm. And to the good graces of our Chief Butler, Brian Johnson, and Deputy Chief Heinrich, really helped us get through this little process up at the state level. So I wanted to reach out to you folks and please thank them for their process and their due diligence on behalf of the community, for the children to be able to occupy that dwelling now so that we can have students in it. It took almost a month at the state level to get that process done, but without their help, we may still have an empty portable. So, please, thank you. Thank you to the taxpayers as well, Town Manager, thank you. And one other thing I'd like to hit on is I've been able to spend a lot of time up at the athletic fields, you know, with grandchildren now at that age, running around in Laffa Fields for baseball and West Road for soccer. And I've got to tell you, and I'd like to compliment our Rec Department, Art Salitis, Sid Kerr, and our Highway Department up at Laffa Road. As you know, there's been several people over the years come in with a lot of cars speeding up in that area with children and that, and Mr. Woolley and his staff went up there some time ago and painted some lines and crosswalks, which has made a huge difference. Just that little bit has slowed everybody down. It isn't fixed at 100%, but that's what, you know, these little things that people don't see or hear that makes this community what it is. And people need to hear more of that because there's a lot more going on in town to stuff like that. So I'd like to thank them as well, Town Manager, and that. So, again, thank your staff and appreciate all the efforts on behalf of the school and the community of Lunedary. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Bob.
Sheryl, can I say something real quick? Just another point. Doug Cole is on the Recreation Committee as well, and he's been doing a lot of great work with arts, so no worries.
Name and address, sir.
Tony D. Francesco, 1 Cheshire Court. Bob ruined the whole first part of what I was going to say tonight. What I was going to say is people don't come here to these meetings to say what a great job you're doing, but now I can't say that. But usually, people do come to the meetings, and they usually want to affect some kind of a change. The question that you all have as counselors is to try to figure out if those people are actually the majority, the minority, or somewhere in between. That's not an easy thing to do. I've personally been impressed with several people on this board, and ones I remember in the past, Chad and Ron, holding something off to say, gee, you know, I need some time to think about this. I need to make some phone calls. I need to listen to what people are saying around town. I think Ted, one time, you said you wanted to go to Shaw's and walk around and have people ask you questions or whatever. So, and that's certainly one way that you can gauge what you have in front of you. And let's be clear, we could fill this room with 100 people all wanting the same thing, and that's still not the majority of the town, right? It's still not a majority. It's just, it's 100 of X number of thousand people that vote every year. Unfortunately, there's way more that don't even vote. But you know what? Even the people that don't vote, you still need to represent them as well and try to get in the weeds and figure out what it is, how it is, and when it is. And we know, we know from having done this for a long time, that really, the only opinion that counts is the one that happens at the ballot box. That's the real opinion, right? And so we have to make sure that those things come in front of the people and that you don't, because 100 people fill a room, you all decide maybe, well, you know what, maybe we shouldn't put that on the ballot. Let the people decide. Let's look at last year. Let's look at the school district, who week after week after week were bombarded with citizens, well-meaning citizens, saying, you're not going to get a bond passed, you're not going to get a bond passed, you're not going to get a bond passed. What happened? The bond passed, okay? So there's an example of the silent majority and that silent minority, and that case was wrong. And I hope you can keep that example in the back of your head while you're going through the budget process that started last Saturday with your four-and-a-half-hour fun Saturday. So please keep that in mind. I'm going to leave you with that example, and again, I hope that you're going to remember it. Secondly, I'd like to make reference to the DPW electronic sign that's in front of the police station. The taxpayers have given you, us, and everybody else in town, an absolutely gorgeous complex. And what we have in front is, I want to say a broke ass, but it isn't. It's a brand-new, shiny, orange DPW sign that's giving out important messaging, necessary messaging, to the citizens of Lunedary, but only if you're driving south. So, kind of makes no sense. So what I'm asking is, please, put some money in your budget, get a real electronic sign. The school district has one. Frogs didn't grow five legs when that went up. It's tasteful. It gives important messaging to the taxpayers of Lunedary. I think that's needed in this municipal complex as well, and I hope that you will consider that. Now, in addition to my making the suggestion, as you all know, what I do is volunteer. I would be glad to volunteer to help, to research, to investigate, or anything that's needed to try and figure out if this can or can't be done. We know it can be done. The question is, how much is it going to cost, and is it something that you're willing to propose or not? And I'll leave you with that. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? This will be the only opportunity to speak tonight after we go through the public hearings. We're going to go through the public hearings next, and there will not be another opportunity to speak tonight. So if you have anything to say, now's the time. All right, we're going to close public comment. Motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I am going, Mr. Campo. Can I take all three of these at the same time?
That would be perfectly fine by me.
Resolution 2023-21, 22, and 23. These are all with regards to unanticipated revenue. One from the Department of Justice, the United States Department of Justice, another one from the State Department of Safety, and the other one from the New Hampshire State Council on Arts. So, floor is yours.
Perfect. So we'll start with the first one, the COPS grant or the Office of Community Oriented Policing. If you remember, back in August, Patrick came and requested ARPA funds in order to revamp their dispatch with the understanding that we had another grant coming. Well, that grant has officially come. It's this one right here, it's $75,000 to rewire and restructure their entire dispatch center to get it more up-to-date and functional than it currently is. The second one is a Manchester Airport Elevated Alert CI Protection Grant for $10,000 to assist with the protection at the airport. The third one is from the State Arts Council. We received this, Larry Casey and the Arts Council have done a great job applying for this and receiving this in the past three years, I believe, and this helps fund the Concerts on the Commons with the assistance of the State Arts Council.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Campo? One from the council. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. We have three items out there for a public hearing, as our Finance Director has just described. Does anyone have any questions regarding any one of these three items? Yes?
Cindy Rice Connelly, 373, winding line. What did you say the third one was, the amount?
The amount, I believe.
Fifty-four hundred?
Fifty-four hundred.
Four to fifty-one hundred. I believe it's fifty-four to fifty-four. Fifty-four?
Great, thanks.
Fifty-four hundred.
Thank you. So for all of you that go to Concerts on the Common, some nights we have up to 900 people out there, the good news is, is they're getting funding from elsewhere to continue to support that program, which has been overwhelmingly successful.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Mr. Town Manager, is this the amount of money that the Police Department was expecting to receive from the federal government?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then, I guess, second question is, the fifty-four hundred, is that like a max amount that they could have received, or was there a potential of to receive more?
So, there was potential to receive more. I believe they actually requested for more, and then the State Arts Council reviews all the applications they get and disperse it based on what they feel is appropriate.
Okay. And our 10 grand for the airport area, do we know how that will be spent? Or will that be spent to offset other costs?
So, you're going to have to give me a minute on this one. Sorry, just looking at the email.
So it's coming from the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, so I'm assuming it's going to be spent in some sort of community-oriented way?
Well, yeah, it said it was specifically more for the airport, so I just want to make sure.
So this will go to, I believe, elevated infrastructure to assist with providing additional protection at the airport. That, I'm not sure if it's cameras, or I think this may actually be personnel costs.
Okay. That's what I was thinking. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Anything further? Accept the motion to approve all three resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Motions carry. I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Public hearing is now closed. New business, our Town Moderator Jonathan Kippe, adoption of a new electronic ballot counting devices. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the first presentation that the Town Council is seeing. We are learning about this as you are learning about this. So this is going to be our first exposure to what the state has been vetting out for the last, what seems like, a couple of years. Good evening, members of the council. Jonathan Kippe, your Town Moderator, joined tonight by...
Sherri Farrell, your Town Clerk.
And also Cindy Rice Connelly is with us in the audience tonight, our School District Moderator. So as you said, this is your first introduction to this. It's been a long process that we've been going through to try to identify ballot counting devices for use in New Hampshire. And a point of clarification, they're sometimes referred to as tabulators, sometimes devices, sometimes machines, and I may use all three of those terms while we're discussing it tonight, so it all means the same thing. You have a single sheet in your packet, a fact sheet, and at the top, it lists the RSA that, as per my understanding, this body, the governing body, needs to approve the use of devices and which device will be used, and notify the Secretary of State about that decision. And that's why we're here tonight. We're asking you to adopt the new electronic ballot counting device. So some of this is review for you. This is a refresher. The New Hampshire Ballot Law Commission must approve tabulators for use in New Hampshire. And right now, there's only one tabulator approved for use, and it's the AccuVote machine, which we have four of here in Lunedary, and we've had them for many, many years. And as I've presented to this board before, they're very near the end of their life. So the Ballot Law Commission knew that, the Secretary of State knew that, so they initiated a process over two years ago to try to identify replacement tabulators for us. And I'm just going to review some of the steps in the process because representatives from Lunedary were actively involved in many, many of those steps, including attending the Ballot Law Commission meetings. So in 2022 and 2023, several jurisdictions were selected by the Secretary of State to use three devices that the Ballot Law Commission had identified as potential for use in New Hampshire. Those three are the Dominion Image Cast Precinct 2 device, represented by LHS Associates in Salem. The second one is Voting Works, which is an open-source device, and the third one was electronic system, electronic systems and software, ESNS, as it's known. So devices from those three manufacturers were used on a trial basis in elections in New Hampshire, including here in Lunedary in March of this year, our town and school election this year. We had six of the LHS Dominion devices, which were used on a trial basis. And for every trial that was conducted throughout the state on the various devices, the Secretary of State, in collaboration with the hosting jurisdiction, performed an audit following the election. Not a recount, it was simply an audit to determine whether or not the machines accurately counted the ballots that were fed through them. And in every single case, the audit was deemed successful, which means these devices accurately read New Hampshire ballots. So following our trial in March, elections were held in other parts of the state on May 9. I attended the Molten Borough Town Election in the morning, where I got to see the Voting Works device at an election. Then in the afternoon, I went over to Hanover to see the ESNS device in action. So as a result of that, those of us here in Lunedary have had the opportunity to see each one of these devices at an actual election. I share this with you to let you know that I believe we've done a lot of due diligence to try to make the best recommendation we can make to you tonight. Following that, on August 2, the Secretary of State hosted a demonstration day, a day where they demonstrated the ballot counting devices, the three contenders, at the Legislative Office Building. That was open to legislators, the public, school and town officials, and there was a good turnout. We had an opportunity to hear presentations from each of the manufacturers and their representatives, to see a demonstration of the machines, to actually try them, test them out, put them through their paces, kick the tires, if you will. In following that, we each offered individual feedback that the Secretary of State used and the Ballot Law Commission. So following that, the Ballot Law Commission eliminated the ESNS device, which left them with two, the LHS Dominion device and the Voting Works device. And on September 15, the Ballot Law Commission conditionally approved those two devices to be used starting with the local elections in March of 2024. So I'll back you up a little bit. It appears we're going to have a presidential primary election in January, so we will not have new devices for that should we choose to move forward with this. We'll still be using our AccuVote devices. So once those two were identified as being conditionally approved, we, Lunedary, issued a request for proposal from each of them, and once we received those two proposals back, Sherri took a copy, Cindy, our school moderator, took a copy, I took a copy, we individually reviewed them, and then we compared notes, and we unanimously recommended the LHS Dominion Image Cast Precinct device to adopt here in Lunedary. Now, if you review the, or if you'll take a look at the document that's in your packet, there are just a few of the entries that I'd like to review with you. One is the three-year total cost of acquisition. The purchase price plus the warranty that's included for the first three years, the difference in the two costs is $950 over the course of three years, with Dominion being slightly higher. Second important factor is the number of jurisdictions where these machines, these approved machines, are currently being used. The LHS device, there's 42 different jurisdictions throughout New England, and Voting Works has devices deployed in five counties in Mississippi. And the total number of devices deployed in New England is 349 for the Dominion Image Cast Precinct device and 72 in Mississippi for Voting Works. So those are important factors that we considered. And I'll also remind you, it's there also on the sheet, that the Voting Works device is, uses open-source software. So given the very close, the financials being so close, we recommend the Dominion Image Cast Precinct 2 for three primary differentiating reasons. One is their widespread use throughout the country and throughout New England with LHS. A second one is the Dominion device physically separates ballots with write-in votes in the ballot box at the bottom. There's a separate compartment that is sealed, and the write-ins go in there. With the Voting Works device, those write-in ballots are not physically separated, but they're adjudicated at the end using a laptop, where the laptop brings up an image of each of them. The machine knows that it went through, and it captures the image that we would then review on a laptop to adjudicate those ballots. The use of laptops with determining voting outcomes, vote results, is coming. I'm still pretty old-fashioned. I like to handle the ballots with the write-ins and look at them myself just to be sure, so I'm not quite ready for the laptop for that yet. And then the third part, and I think this is critically important, is LHS Associates located in Salem, their proven record of service to our community. And I need go no further than the November 2020 general election, when one of our AccuVote devices failed to print its record of the votes at the end of the evening. So in consultation with an attorney from the Attorney General's Office that night, the Secretary of State's office, it was determined we needed to recount all 17,000 ballots that had been cast that day. And it was probably within half an hour, LHS had staff on site with spare machines, and our good friends in Milford also brought a couple of tabulators over, so we were able to make fairly quick work of that process, but I think that demonstrates the responsiveness of the LHS staff. So for those three reasons primarily, we recommend the adoption of the LHS Dominion Image Cast Precinct 2 by the Town of Lunedary. Sherri, anything to add?
No, as you can tell, we've really done our homework on this. Lunedary leads the way when it comes to elections, too, because of our transparency and because of the amount of effort that we share with our Secretary of State, Dave Scanlon. So if you have any questions, please ask. Voting Works is definitely something new on the horizon, but it really isn't tested yet as far as how they're going to service us. Presently, they don't have anyone available in the state of New Hampshire. That's concerning if we do have a problem. So again, that's why, you know, we, losing my voice, that's why we're definitely suggesting to everyone that LHS is the way to go.
Questions?
Mr. Chair. Just as a point of personal observation, when I had attended the LHS, when we did that, I don't know if pilates is the proper term, but the training and that trial of the Dominion, I'd like to elucidate a little bit about the write-in ballots. Knowing that it goes in a separate compartment and also having the ability to audibly hear just the difference of the sounds of the paper, knowing that it went somewhere else, either it was an empty or a near-empty ballot container, and it was separated from the regular done ballots, I think it was, for me, a little bit reassuring and... and I just wanted to kind of expand upon that. So thank you. Great presentation. Thank you.
Ms. Chair.
Yeah, please.
I think really a big piece of this that stands out is how much staff and how quickly they will be willing to come and assist if there is an issue with any of the machines compared to the other company. I mean, being able to be here within about a 30-minute timeframe is pretty huge, especially with how large of a voting block we have here within Londonderry. And I mean, the other company having two hours and two hours in Londonderry for a primary or a general election, that could shut us down and push us out greatly. I mean, I think that's a huge advantage that the LHS Dominion machine has.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
The conditional approval by the Ballot Law Commission stipulates that any vendor doing business has to have somebody within two hours of a voting location. I think that's where their two hours comes from.
Yes.
As Sherry said, to our knowledge, they have nobody in the state yet, but they have guaranteed the Ballot Law Commission, they will be staffed up and ready to go. I think the difference is, we've seen it from LHS. We haven't yet seen it from Voting Works.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I agree with Ted. I think having that support and training that they've done the past, well, as long as I've been involved in it, 11 years, is so vital. And I can tell the people from, you know, the citizens, that the crew that handle the elections do a really good job. They start at 5:00 in the morning, and sometimes they're not they're not home until 3:30 the following morning. Take it very seriously, and I can assure you that there aren't very many hiccups. And when they are, they're taken care of right away. So I totally agree with your recommendation at this point.
First, thank you both for all the work you did on this. I really appreciate that. You mentioned, Jonathan, that the old voting machines are still going to be used in January, correct? So if we decide not to vote on this tonight, it doesn't affect anything about ordering, correct, if we postpone it for one meeting? Or would it, anyway, impact anything if we pushed it off to the 20th?
Two things to answer that question. I think putting it off till the 20th is okay. Each vendor has asked for as much lead time as possible to make sure they can have machines available for us for March. So the 20, what I've had in my mind is by Thanksgiving, and that 20th is obviously before Thanksgiving. The second piece of that is if we decide not to move forward, the AccuVote machines will no longer be supported after 2024. That's as long as LHS can commit to it. So our 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 time span is limited for some sort of decision to do something, whether that's to replace them or do something else.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Yes. All right, so I've got a few things here. Just a quick calculation here. Election official, the election officials are, you know, we are the election officials. Collectively, I mean, I've done 25 elections. I just went back and did the count. So between all of us, we've done probably 50-plus elections. In Mississippi, there are 3 million people, and there are 82 counties. So five counties out of 82 are using it. I don't know anything about Voting Works or anything else. I don't know how it works. I'm assuming the pole pads will continue to work with these?
They're totally separate systems. They don't work together, so the pole pads will continue to operate as they always have.
Okay, so that won't change?
Nope.
Can you ask the vendor what the lead time is on the machines?
We were told.
Give you any indication?
LHS said they'd like to know by December 1st if we're going to order machines. We didn't ask that question of Voting Works. I suspect their timeline would be similar.
I mean, the choice seems obvious. You know, if if the council was to tell you tonight that we're, you know, we're leaning down the path of going with Dominion, you know, and I believe councillor, you know, and councillor Dunn is going to ask for us to wait till the 20th, he can also invoke councillor privilege to make us wait for the 20th. Does that give you enough to start doing what you need to do?
I will say that I know towns such as Exeter and Derry have already ordered their machines, but I do agree with our moderator that I think as long as by the next date that we have a decision, because Voting Works, actually, they're in the process, but they can't guarantee any machines yet. So they'll be ready for our town elections, but they're not ready yet. LHS, we just don't want to be in a situation of other towns have ordered them and, you know, we're backordered on them, so.
No, I appreciate your hard work.
Yeah.
I just want to be able to do my due diligence and make sure that I haven't had a chance to research it on my own, so I appreciate it.
And just just for a point of clarification, if I can. So 20, the end of 2024, so December 2024 is when LHS has said they can, they will discontinue servicing our current tabulators, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so even if we're past December 1st, just for just for clarification, we can still, will not be ideal, but we can still use the Accu, the AccuVote tabulators, correct?
Provided they work.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Provided they work.
And the problem, oh, sorry, councillor Franz, the problem is, is that they can't guarantee or get the parts because everything is so archaic right now with them. So that's where the weakness is. If what happens to us happens again, as it did in in 20, we have a major problem. Because remember, an election is considered an open meeting, so that's why we don't get to pause for 24 hours and figure out our situation. So it's something, you know, that we have to take all of those factors into consideration.
And working both elections, or we had to stay till 2, 3, 4, 6?
Six.
Further in the morning?
Yeah.
With that broken-down
Yeah.
tabulator of our current system and utilizing the most recent Dominion in the most recent election. I mean, for me, it's clear, so thank you. Thank you for answering my questions.
Yes, Ted. Sherry, you're in connection with many of the other state clerks across the state. Have you surveyed many of the others and where they may go?
That's a great question, councillor Combs. What I've found so far, and I'm part of the executive board at the state, and I work closely with Secretary Scanlon, is that the larger communities such as ours are leaning toward LHS and have already started the process. We're kind of, as a town and city clerks board, thinking that if anyone's going to try Voting Works, the smaller communities, maybe such as Moltenborough, some of those, if they're going to try it, but there's a risk involved. But overall, to answer your question, what I've observed is that leaning toward LHS.
So there'll be a big push
Absolutely.
across the state to acquire these machines.
Absolutely.
And so that could create quite a demand and a quite a lead time to get these machines. So the further we get behind in ordering them, we could be behind the eight ball.
Absolutely.
So remember, we got to get 200-plus of them if everybody decides to go with it, because we don't do it by county.
Exactly.
We do it by town.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, one last question is, how many total machines are we looking at?
I'm sorry, six.
Six.
We have four now. We've had four since, I think, 2007. Town has grown. More villagers are turning out, so we want to have the capacity.
Thank you.
All right, so here's the deal. We're either the first or the second largest polling center in the state, depending on what Derry does, whether they split or they don't split. At the end of the day, you know, the state lays down the law and we follow it. We're Dillon rules state. That's how we operate. So it's up to you guys. You can either, you can give them a consensus and an indication that we're leaning towards Dominion. You can invoke councillor privilege if you want to.
I would just like to put it off to the next meeting, that's all. I don't want to have to if.
I mean, we can, we can just go ahead and do that.
Just so that I can do my own research, nothing. I just want to be able to be able to vote. I haven't been able to do any research on any of this on my own, so.
You can invoke councillor privilege if you want.
Okay, I'll invoke the councillor privilege.
Then we're putting this off until the next meeting, but it's clear that you have an indication that we're leaning towards agreeing with your recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Point of clarification, being that councillor privilege was invoked, we shall vote on this next meeting, correct?
We have to.
We absolutely have to vote on it next meeting.
Thank you.
On the selection of the machine.
And councillors, just as a general point of knowledge, the union leader did a great job in his story just last week about Derry and their town clerk, who was a past moderator, and their selection and the process that they're already involved with. So that's kind of a neat one to go back to.
Thank you.
And also, if anyone wants to reach out to either of us, you know, before the next meeting, please feel free to do that, any any way we can help, because we've done a lot of research with it. We'd love to share.
I'd like to talk to both of you.
Absolutely, Ron. Thank you.
So ladies and gentlemen, councillor privilege means is there is a provision in our charter that any councillor at any time on any subject can push a decision off one meeting. Upon doing that, though, it requires us to make a decision at the next meeting. So that's how that works. Yes.
I just wanted to be clear, do you have any idea what kind of lead time they're looking at, once we do put an order in?
The last we heard before orders started coming in was they'd like to have the order placed by December 1st to assure we would have delivery by our town and school elections in March.
But that's not a guarantee.
There are no guarantees.
Right, so certainly, I work in the world of construction, and materials are behind everywhere. So I just really worry that they will not have materials in time if we delay another two more weeks. I just want Mr. Dunn to understand that, sorry, councillor Dunn, to understand that if we delay another two more weeks, what this could be for our town election.
Well, hopefully, we have a strong enough relationship with LHS that they're going to hear what we did, and they're going to feel good about taking a risk.
I hope so.
Anything further? Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Order 2023-15, the expenditure of maintenance trust funds for winter maintenance. And following right behind that, with our Director of Public Works, we have Winter Operations Presentation. So the floor is yours, sir.
Did I make it 2:1? Just a little. Just a little. We're talking about 2 degrees here, folks. Sorry, I can't please everybody. Good evening. My name is Dave Wall. I'm the Director of Public Works in municipal facilities. Thank you, Chairman of the Board, members of the Board, Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager. I'm here tonight to, kids got their candy, we're probably thinking about turkey and the fixings, but I'm here to talk about winter, because it's going to be here before we know it. So.
Don't you have the power to delay it?
I wish. I wish. I'd like to invoke some privilege. Delay it two months. Be nice.
You like that.
Nice. At least get past the holidays. So this EMTF request is to allow for a drawdown of the winter maintenance funds. There's, this request is for $18,000, which is slightly over the 50% of the average spent over the previous five fiscal years from the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund. This is, the request is bringing to, for the Town Hall, all three Londonderry Fire Departments, the Police Department, Library, Morrison, and the Access Center as well. I don't, we don't have the the numbers up there, but the average of the the last five years is 17,297.95. And so what this basically allows me to do is, as winter progresses and we get bills in from contractors and whatnot, we can pay them, we draw it down. If we get to a point in the winter where we're, I believe, we're going to go beyond this, which we usually do, because this is only half of what we spent, I'll be in front of you again for another allocation. And then if a third is needed to round off the books, then that's what we do. If at any point, though, any of these allocations are not met, then all this money is returned back to avoided and back into the budget, so.
And Mr. Woolley, this is going back to when, to consolidate down the times that you have to come before us to approve for winter maintenance, right?
Correct. It streamlines it so that every time I have a bill, I don't have to be in here basically every meeting saying, hey, we got, I got more bills for you to pay.
Exactly.
Dave, we did this last year, right?
We've done it the last two winter seasons quite successfully, and and all the bills are available and for review through the Finance Department. And at any time, when I come before you, if, you know, you come in front of you again, you want to say, hey, I want to see all the bills for the first 18,000, we usually bring them, bring them at that meeting, too.
And I'm sure if anything, our vendors are a lot happier potentially getting paid slightly faster than coming before us.
Yeah.
This allows us to get the approval and authorization prior to actually incurring the expense.
Wonderful.
Understood.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Didn't you work well last two years? Accept the motion to approve? So moved?
Second.
In favor, so move by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All set. Next item is the Winter Operations Presentation. Do want to take note here that you've taken, you know, liberties here to make sure that you'll be clearing roads for pizza delivery, DoorDash, and Grubhub. I'm sure they'll be happy. Ooh, what a spiral. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sir? Does this one work? Yeah. Each one of them have a name on them.
When you're ready, I'm going to step out for just a minute to use the gentleman's room, but I will be, I will be back.
Sure. So good evening, once again. I'm here to discuss this upcoming winter emergency operations plan. I like to roll this out every year, and after tonight's presentation, this will be available on the Public Works website for anybody to review any further if they'd like to do so. So one of the main reasons, obviously, that we plow is for public safety. Without us being out there, making sure that we clear the roads in a proficient way, sometimes these are the unfortunate things that can happen. People can get hurt, obviously damage to property, and and it puts a lot of lives at stake here when they're out there crashing the side of the road for obvious reasons. So our mantra is, you know, red and blue, follow yellow. So without us doing what we do, the boys in blue and and red can't get around and on calls and whatnot. And it's unfortunate John stepped out, because he actually is one of the loudest people that speaks up about us being first responders, and so I'd like to just bring bring some of that attention to that. Actually, in 2003, President George W. Bush issued Policy Directive 8, recognizing Public Works as first responders. And believe it or not, that was 20 years ago now. The first state was Mississippi that actually recognized Public Works as first responders. And in 2019, the National First Responders Day on October 28th, they finally, you know, brought a lot of attention to the fact that we are first responders as well. And then our our Governor Chris Sununu, just last year, signed that into formal law for the state of New Hampshire as well, so the second state in the union to be recognized. And I I just wanted to bring a lot of that attention, because I think it's well-deserved and long overdue for our for our department. So other advantages to plowing snow and whatnot, obviously, the big one, school, is it going to get called? Is it going to get delayed? That's a big impact for a lot of people in the town, or any town for that matter. And we like to think that we do a good job. The school is the ones that make the call, just to make that clear. We're not the ones that decide whether a school is going to be called or not, but they do heavily rely upon reports that come from us, and they speak to us in the early morning hours and find out what the conditions of the roads are around town. Obviously, traffic is not slow due to accidents. People want to get home when they get out of work, or they want to get to work in the morning in their normal paces. We don't want to impact commerce, especially in the north end of town around the airport. Obviously, there's a lot of deliveries that go on up there and a lot of people traveling to and from the airport. So we want to keep deliveries on schedule. There's a lot of, a lot of different things that are important that you don't really think about when it comes to plowing, but even especially today, my mother herself, she gets her prescriptions in the mail, so obviously, we want to make sure that those get there when they need to be. We don't care so much about the bills, but, you know, kids might like the holiday cards and checks that come from grandma, so. You know, there's still a lot of sports going on and a lot of concerts, you know, holiday gatherings and what have you, so we want to make sure we're doing a good job pushing back all the snow as well, so that if you have these events, you can kind of get onto the shoulder and and park out of the way. Obviously, again, for medical calls, EMT, getting around town, making sure that the roads are as black as possible so that they can get there when moments matter most. And then, yes, of course, the pizza delivery, the DoorDash and Grubhub and all that, we don't really plow for them, but obviously, if you haven't done your grocery shopping, like most people do, they go in and raid the stores when we hear the first big snowstorm's coming. I still don't understand that. I guess that stems from the 70s and what have you not, but but still, people run right out and load up their fridges, and about three days later, they throw everything out. But at any rate, it's just the way New Englanders are, I guess. So anyhow, I just wanted to share with you a little bit so that it's kind of clearly understood about some of our our struggles, especially with this particular upcoming season. So this is our org chart, and we revamped it a little bit. And when I first got here, we were very linear. We had one foreman, we had assistant foreman, and then everybody was under him. But as we took all of the buildings and put that underneath the Public Works umbrella, we quickly realized that we needed to have somebody that that can tend to that as well and assist me in that. And so we created that assistant foreman there that you see for the buildings and grounds. And what we've done more recently now is we had And what we've done more recently now is we had a mechanic, one of our two mechanics retire. We know we were going to have extreme challenges trying to find a mechanic for the rates that we have in our current union contract with AFME. And we really wanted to get back to having six truck drivers as well, to have a little bit more boots in the ground out in the field, even though we do pull, you know, we rob from Peter to pay Paul and, and get things done. We, you know, if you're in fleet doesn't mean you can't be assigned somewhere else within our operation if need be, and we do that quite a bit, probably a lot more than we really want to. But leaving just one person in the garage, I still have some concerns about that, but we have a very competent, capable, and very skilled person out there named Jim Gazowski. And last week, we recently promoted him to an assistant foreman, and he's going to help us in another variety of ways, too, with keeping track of expenses and whatnot, and specing vehicles and things of that nature. So, what does that do, though? Well, again, like I said, it leaves us with only one person in the garage, and if you'll see in the operation, he actually goes out and plows as well, and I'll talk that a little bit, a little bit later. But the six truck drivers, you see, we have one vacancy, so if anybody has a CDLB license and is interested and, and is fascinated by what I'm about to present the rest of the way, please come on down and apply. Our first go-around wasn't so successful, we had one candidate apply, didn't work out, so we're back to the drawing board. We've, you know, spent some money and rolled it out in the newspapers for a couple of Sunday editions, we've got it on some websites. And yes, as one of the gentlemen at the back of the room alluded to, we've even got it on that nice orange sign out in front of the Police Department, so. Unfortunately, people live in the north end of town, they probably don't see that opportunity unless they can read backwards in their rearview, but nonetheless, we do have an opening. Another challenge that we're facing is-
I see you have some former firefighters now plowing.
Oh, we, we do, we do, we have some retirees that plow, yeah, for a few years now.
That's, that's, that's great.
And one of our latest hires that we, we had an opening back this summer, again, we had one applicant, fortunately enough, he was, he was good, so we brought him on board. Fortunate or unfortunate, he's also a member of the National Guard, and so he just got called up to serve for a year down on the southern border. So, he departed last week, or two weeks ago now. So, that's a challenge because that's an open route now that we can't necessarily fill, we certainly can't hire it. But, you know, even trying to get temps are tough, we do have a few, and we'll go through that. But those are just about a couple of challenges that we have within our operation. So just, this probably helps you see it a little bit better, but so, there's all the town equipment that we have available, all our personnel that we have available, and last year, when I brought this presentation forward, I brought it in October, and we had three pieces of contracted equipment. Is, is part of the plan, and at the eleventh hour, they, they dropped out, they just couldn't. Basically, another town bit them out from us. They had higher rates, and we, we knew we were vulnerable with their rates, but there wasn't a whole lot we could do with our rates last year. This year, when we saw and realized the savings we're going to have in salt, we adjusted those plow rates so that we're hoping that we could get a couple more pieces back, and we did. The problem is, when we just got his contract, the employee that he has listed as one of his drivers is also somebody that we had as a temporary driver driving our equipment. So, will you see we're at nineteen? We're down to eighteen, so the hits just keep coming. But nonetheless, we'll get the work done, it'll just be a little bit slower, but, but we'll do what we can. So there's thirteen routes, we don't measure necessarily by the mile, but we, we measure our routes by lane miles because there's two sides of a street and they both got to get plowed, so. There's three hundred and seventy-two point three-six lane miles over those thirteen routes. Quite a bit of cul-de-sacs, which are very tiring and they slow us down quite a bit, especially with a wing truck, and we have forty-four dead ends, which slow you down even more. So we're down to, you know, like I said, eighteen pieces before he went to print, we just came to that realization, so, or just after we went to print, I should say. And to get around the beat one time is three to four hours, and that's just on your normal, you know, type of snowstorm event. Not like the very last one of last year, which was sixteen inches of snow and created quite a rippling effect throughout our operation there. More numbers, what else, what else happens? So, you know, I say we're down to eighteen people, well, things happen to those eighteen people. You know, unfortunate circumstances, they have to be out for bereavement, God forbid they get injured. Again, I have one guy in the garage working alone, I have a little bit of cause for concern on that. Want to make sure that he's not, and I've had sit downs with him and make sure that he's not taking any unnecessary risks out there, working alone, and I don't want him getting hurt. You know, a family member may, may become sick and they need to take some time off, Family Medical Leave Act. And the more recent, as we just experienced, you know, if you're part of the military and you get deployed, well, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do about that. And then we get sick, when you work as many hours as we do, twenty-four, thirty-six, sometimes forty-eight hours, your immune system gets worn down, you're drinking a lot of coffee, you're eating a lot of McDonald's when they're open. And, and, or other bad foods. And so, you know, your immune system gets knocked down and, you know, you end up tending to get sick quite a bit, so. But these guys tough it out quite a bit, and we do the best we can for all of us to stay healthy. And again, I've already talked about vacancies that we have, and, you know, at any time, somebody could also retire as well, that's just another thing. But, you know, a lot of these guys have been doing this a long time, and I really don't see any of them that would pull the plug in the middle of winter, they understand the importance of winter and, and what we do here. So, the equipment has aged, thank you again to all the taxpayers, leadership of the town, Town Manager, the Council, the Budget Committee, for supporting our allocation last year and requesting three large dump trucks and a one-ton utility. Those are on order, and this is, again, the importance of when we're going through the budget process now, perhaps it's, it's better than I'm doing this presentation now because you see just how long it takes for these things to get here. Money gets approved by the voters in March, it's not allocated until July, we put the order into the factories, the large trucks are out to sixteen, eighteen months on, on lead time, and the one tons are about a year. So, the trucks that were voted on in March are not here, so we're still plowing with those trucks that were deferred several years out. If Matt were here, we'd be training him, he'd be in his rookie year, he'd be the only one that's good. Some of the other guys last year, although I think we had a hire in January, but he certainly got it, got his legs underneath him last year, learning that. And the contractors that we're bringing back, fortunately, they plowed for us before, so they know the routes fairly well, which is always good. Duration of the events is something that can also prolong plowing. The last five years or so, while the accumulation rates have been down, and I'll have a slide at the end on that that shows it, but they've been very, very long. They'll start out as rain, a lot of guesswork goes into it, forecasts, you know, are, are general around the state. And, but they start as rain, they go into a mix, maybe some snow comes in, it goes back to a rain. And, you know, when it's a prolonged event like that, we need to be here no matter what, treating it or scraping it and re-treating it. It's frustrating, but, but it's important to be done nonetheless. And, you know, we saw some excellent presentations from the Fire Department, Police Department Saturday, and, and they also talked quite a bit about mutual aid, and how they can get other communities to come in from time to time, and then even go and help out other communities. But when it's snowing here, it's snowing all around us, so we don't have that luxury, so we're, we're in it alone. And then there's always just the unknown things, trees down, wires down, accidents, breakdowns, blown tires on equipment. All those things are, are things that, that we have to deal with. We had three breakdowns, actually two breakdowns, and one truck got stuck in that sixteen-inch snowstorm. Unfortunately, the truck that got stuck was in the furthest, most northern point of town, it was a major accident out of ninety-three, twenty-eight was a mess, so to try to get to him took forever to get over there. Even though we got over there with a truck, my truck couldn't do it, we went for a one-ton, that couldn't do it, we had to bring the loader over there. So it took a good forty-five minutes for the loader to drive out there and navigate throughout town and then, and then get back. So that's a route that's not plowed for a good hour, hour and a half, with the gentleman out there waiting. The two other trucks, one of them we abandoned right, right out there at the cul-de-sac closest to 102. That is a truck that is up this year, Truck Five. And another one broke down, we were able to get it back up a couple times, it broke down twice. And the difficulty in that, you'll see further, is that because our mechanic is out plowing, when a truck breaks down, now he's going to come off his route, so now we've got two routes that are uncovered. You know, it's, it's no, it's, it's not cheap work to do, snow plowing, it's necessary, but out of the four point eight million dollars worth of equipment we have at the DPW yard, three point one five million of it, on those twenty-one pieces of equipment that I mentioned, is the replacement cost for that equipment. The salt, I'm sorry, was sand, excuse me. So, sand is, is under budgeted, but, and our pile has been depleted quite a bit, so you saw me Saturday ask for another five thousand dollars to bump that up so that we can keep replenishing that pile of sand, which we mix with salt and use quite a bit during a storm. Salt, we've done some great adjustments to our line item over several years, when I arrived here, we were at two hundred and twenty thousand, and in the last few years, we've now, we're up to two hundred and ninety thousand, and you can see by our average salt usage, we're at two ninety-six. That is based on the two contracts that we got back from the state bid pricing this year, and they were down, one, one contract was down four percent, the other one was down about five point three percent or something like that, so. That helps us because, you know, on our salt line, hopefully we'll hit the two ninety or be a little bit less, and it'll also help us on the other end where we're bringing in contracted equipment, but at a higher rate of pay, which we had, like I said, we just really had no choice to do but to, to secure them. And a round of salt, you know, a lot of people calling up, hey, come salt my street, come salt my street, well, we go out and salt, just one round of salt, just the salt alone on the back of the trucks is over eight grand. So, not to mention the harmful effects that it has in the environment, our equipment, your cars, your property, your lawn, so we, we need to be very diligent in how we use salt. But I will tell you that there is never a point where we're saying, well, let's hold back on that for money reasons and jeopardize public safety, never happens, at all. Public safety won't be compromised in that regard. And all the additional costs, fuel on the trucks, cutting edges are very expensive, equipment for parts when they break down, and other mitigating factors. I already covered that public safety one. So, so here's our accumulation for the last five, and, and seven, ten, fifteen years. And you can see we're usually typically there around the sixty-plus inches of snow in this, in this part of the country, but like I said, the last five years has been very under average. In fact, last year, we were right on, right on point, we were at fifty-two inches until we got walloped with that sixteen-inch heavy wet snowstorm, more traditional snowstorm that we had on March fifteenth. I hate to tell you this, I've been doing this a long time, this will be my twenty-ninth winter, I've been fighting this, and usually we always start off where we left off last winter. So, get ready, don't wait, don't wait on getting your snow blowers, you know, tuned up, don't wait to go buy your shovel, get your ice melt. We'll be deploying the sand barrels out around town shortly, we usually like to get them out there somewhere around Thanksgiving. And, so don't wait, but don't quote me on it either, because Mother Nature's just going to do whatever she wants to do anyhow. And there's some comparison, yeah, that you can see where Lunandary is for lane miles. You know, we're kind of in the middle for, for the communities around us for, for lane miles, but as you can see, there's a, there's a huge discrepancy on how many pieces of equipment we have out there versus, you know, some of the other communities. However, one of the benefits we do have is a lot of the main arteries in town are state. So that's kind of a benefit to us, that we don't have to worry too much about Mammoth Road, 102, Route twenty-eight, so. But we do have a lot of, a lot of miles to plow, nonetheless. And that's really basically it. Well, I do, like, I can just, if you turn your books to page eighteen, I can probably just explain a little bit further on some of the complications of our route. So you'll see there that the garage is highlighted, that nobody's in the garage, and that's because, like I said, our one mechanic is out plowing. The one gentleman that is down on the southern border is, is going to be replaced, hopefully by a hire, if we can get somebody in here. But again, they'll be on a training curve. If otherwise, what we are forced to do then at that point is take our assistant foreman, who should be out supervising or helping tugouts, towouts, and pullouts, or, or maybe assisting with breakdowns and whatnot. Or, you know, dealing with complaints and whatnot, so he'll have to go into a truck. So we lose a supervisor from the field, our other supervisor, he's also plowing in a truck. So we've got some work to do in the years to come with, when we talk about how do, how can we improve and lessen our vulnerability. If we start to really get back into traditional snow accumulations around here and getting six-inch snowstorms, or nine-inch, or twelve-inch, or even greater, you know, there's going to be some upset people, especially, you know, depending on when the timing comes in. You know, they're very rarely in the overnights, although we do spend a lot of night, but that's usually catching up, and we try to get things done in the nighttime when cars aren't, aren't out and in our way. The last thing I'd like to just say in closing is I'd just like to thank all the men and women that I do work with. You know, they're, they're a top shelf, top-notch group of people. When you call in and you have a concern, I like to call them concerns rather than complaints, you know, we'll, we'll try and, you know, fix anything that we didn't get to. It's not that we forgot, we, we know every square inch there is out there that needs to be addressed, and we'll get there, sometimes we just have to, you know, put things in the backburner and come back around and deal with other priorities or other breakdowns or other things that are slowing us up. But we will come back over the days and, and nights to follow and get things cleaned up and get them back to as normal as we possibly can. We understand that winter is a tough time of year for everybody, it can be expensive for people, you've got other expenses you're incurring, your heating bills and groceries and, and holidays and everything, and we understand it, we're right there with you, we have all the same stresses and struggles in our lives as well, and, and to have, you know, small stuff like this and to deal with such a large town, they, they definitely deserve an attaboy, and they, they've got one from me, so. So just be patient with us, we help where we can, and if we, you know, happen to hit a mailbox, we apologize, it's not intentional, just give our mainline a call, and we'll see what we can do to fix it and take care of it for you, so. With that, I'll just take any questions?
Questions? Yes, please.
Did you provide a document like this in your last two years? Or is this new for you?
I did last year, last year it really took out, it was at the, their Winter Ops was a 2003 edition, but it did include a lot of the mapping and what have you, so I worked with GIS quite a bit last year, this year I pretty much dusted that off, fine tuned it a little bit more, obviously changed the statistical data and what have you.
This is really impressive, this is really well done.
Thank you.
The three years when I was prior on the Town Council, we were not provided something like this, and this is really well done.
Thank you.
Nice job, Dave.
And it's on the, it's on, like I said, tomorrow, it'll be posted on the town website, so, you know, I, I encourage people to go there and look at that because you can find your road, you can see, you know, it's good to have a name, not just the jerk plow driver, you know, we always show up right after you shovel the driveway, I get it. We have cameras hidden, you know. No, it's just, that's just the luck of the draw. But you can see, you know, you, you know, Chad's very familiar with his plow driver, you know, and it's good to have a name. If, if you don't have a face, at least you've got a name, that's a person in there, that's a dad, you know, that's a husband, that's a loved one out there that's doing that. And sometimes, you know, it happens on Christmas and we're here, I've missed plenty of Thanksgivings as well and even a Halloween along the way, so. You know, so we're, we're people, too, so we, we don't, we don't, we're not out here trying to raise hell, we've got a tough job to do. And you can see the name of who's driving your truck, you can see the age of the equipment that's on your route, so you understand it. If you see a truck that's on your route that's thirteen, fourteen years old, it's been deferred, you know, then, then you can kind of understand it. You know, that, well, you know, maybe he hasn't been around because that truck broke down. If you see a truck that's even one-year-old, there was a here, these three trucks that we're looking at this year, they're 2013s, I explained this Saturday, that particular model, when the first EGR coolers came out and whatnot, and dealing with EPA regulations is still really finicky, and, and those trucks came in that year where I was, and we had a truck that had ten miles on it, didn't even make it out of the yard for the first storm of the year, didn't even make it out of the yard. So, but, that's an anomaly, but, but it's a tough job, and we do appreciate everybody's patience and time.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will say that during some of the storms, I may speak to Dave two to three times during those storms, find out if the crews need anything, how's everybody doing? Because you want to know what, when we're sitting at home and it's nice and warm and it's the middle of the night, and you get up in the morning and the street is clear and everything, it's because somebody else went without sleep. And because they were out there working all night. out there working all night and everything. And I will say, when they, you know, I've noticed, not only in my own neighborhood, but when they go down the road and you have cleared your driveway, they do try to avoid plowing you in. They do actually make an effort to, you know, to kind of swing it out a little bit and not plow you in. So, I have to say, you know, and when Adam goes by, I wave to him, and Adam's all smiles and everything as he goes by, and, you know, they're good people. They really are. I mean, and they work hard. And so, but thank you.
And one last thing, just if you want to try to avoid that, shoveling your driveway and then we come by, if you're on Facebook, go to our page. One thing that I've done, and it's become very popular, up to like 3,000 followers now, every time we're doing something different in the operation, I'm putting a post out. So, I'm letting you know. I'm giving you a little bit of insight into the think tank as to what's going on, what we see coming, if the guys need to go take a break, are they going to go get something to eat or whatever. So, you'll see when we're breaking, and then we're headed back out. Or I'll call, "Hey, last round." So, it'll be on the page, you'll see it. You may have to wait three to four hours, even though you say, "I thought they called for last round." Well, you just saw it. Sometimes you might be at the end of that route. So, if you see us go by on one side of your street, okay, he's on his last round. I'm going to wait, and we'll have another cup of coffee, or stay warm, like you said, inside, and wait to see him go by. But that'll be the last pass. So, really pay attention to the updates that we put on Facebook, because it is, it's, I put the whole operation out there. So, I can help you out quite a bit.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. All right, so, Town Treasurer Warren article discussion. So, at one of our last meetings, the Finance Director came in and made a very strong case for the fact that there needs to be more attention paid to this area. The current Town Treasurer came in, who I think has been the Town Treasurer for about 13 or 14 years, also made the recommendation that we should move down a path of looking at some more appointment area control of the, of the Town Treasurer versus an election, where you can get anybody who's just 18 years old with no qualifications, and we've confirmed that we can actually do a background check and actually check the person and avoid what happened in Peterborough where they lost over a million dollars, because there was oversight that was missing. Is that, am I close to everything we talked about?
Yeah. I'm not sure the Peterborough situation would be relevant there, but yes.
Well, they lost a million dollars, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we want to avoid that.
I would agree a hundred percent.
So, the more eyes, the better? More qualified eyes, the better? So, the question before us tonight is, is not whether or not to put the Warren article on, is whether or not to have a public hearing about it on November 20th and have a discussion about it. So, that's the questions that's before us. So, what do you want to do? Do you want to have the discussion or not? It's pretty simple.
I think we'd be remiss if we didn't open it up and hear from the public and have further discussion.
Agreed.
Yeah.
So, we'll have the discussion. It doesn't mean we're doing anything. It means we're going to have a discussion about it, and we're going to have a public hearing. Does that cover you for that one?
Yes, it does. I'll notice it up and make sure that that's ready to go on the 20th.
Thank you. Okay, next item. Old Mammoth Road, road gate petition.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, this is something that, you know, we've, in Lunandary, I think it's fair to say, have been talking about for a while. There have been concerns on Old Mammoth Road about traffic, safety, speed, and related issues going back decades, as far as I'm aware, long before I became involved in the town. Until recently, almost all of those discussions have taken place at the Traffic Safety Committee. The Traffic Safety Committee has, has, you know, discussed these concerns at length. There hasn't been a lot done by way of infrastructure improvements over the years. The Police Department has certainly done upgraded enforcement, and that seems to help until it, until it doesn't. And so, you know, after taking office, I heard the same concerns that my predecessor had been hearing and that you all probably have been hearing as well. The matter was discussed at like three or four Traffic Safety Committee meetings since, just since I took office. And, you know, it reached the point where, at a meeting that I was present at, that you were present at, Mr. Chairman, you know, there had been a lot of talk, but there, one thing was clear, that if certain interventions were to be made, they needed to come from the town council. And so, I made a motion that you amended, I believe, Mr. Chairman, to more, to get at the point a little bit more clearly, that the matter, you know, the time for talking at the Traffic Safety Committee was done. It had been gone over ad nauseam for decades, and that, you know, it was time to have a serious discussion about whether certain things should or should not be done. The decision was made at the town level to stripe the road. We heard positively from Mr. Labrou at the last town council meeting. He was pleased with that. We've heard as well from people who don't think that that's going to make any difference whatsoever. The discussion that was, that occurred, I believe, when this was first taken up at the town council, was, okay, you know, putting a gate in that location is a fairly radical intervention. What might the unintended consequences be? And does the petition that the council has before it reflect the thoughts and opinions of everybody who may be affected by that decision? The directive or consensus from the town council was, let's get more of a cross-section of not only people with addresses on Old Mammoth Road, but also people in this general catchment area. And that was the, that was the consensus that was relayed to the petitioners. We have since received additional signatures. I believe there's six additional signatures from people not simply on Old Mammoth Road, but in some of those neighborhoods. And that is what brings us here this evening.
All right, so it's just for clarification purposes, Old Mammoth Road is Mammoth Road, and it is where the, one of the original villages of town were. It's where the current senior center is. It's where the old north fire station is, and it connects to Grinear Field Road, the Grinear Field Road and Page Road intersection. And specifically, we're talking about the Grinear Field Road, Page Road, four-way intersection.
That's, that's exactly right, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we can level set on where this is. So, what happened at that meeting, in the Traffic Safety Committee meeting that I attended, since one of the other councillors was out of town, is that we let them know, only the town council can close a road. Nobody else can close a road. Nobody else can decommission a road. Only the town council can close a road. The cost of one of these gates is in excess of $50,000?
It's very significant, yes.
So, what was proposed there was, was to put a double line through. So, what I had proposed to them was, is that it's really more of a discussion about what is the village district. I called it the village district. No one, it's the only term I could figure out to refer to it. So, that the people who are adjacent and have use of Mammoth Road, how many, how many, you know, citizens are actually affected from what decision may or may not be made? I received numbers today that from Lori Lane to Grinear Field Road and just north of Grinear Field Road, Mammoth Road going up towards Merrill Farm, and the planner will correct me if I get this wrong, there's about 127 homes.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
So, if we just average two people in there, we, you know, we've got 260 people, and I'm sure there's more or less, but something in that area. So, there's 127 homes up there that would be affected. I think what the people who are sitting over here on the right are asking is, is that they, you know, and no one doubts that it's a dangerous intersection, is what is the cause and effect of closing the road? We don't have to do anything tonight. We can also look in and say, "I've reviewed their petitions," and I see approximately 24 households out of 127 from the different ones that I've seen, with approximately 40 names signing it with multiple occupants of some homes. So, is this, you know, is this something that we want to continue to have a discussion about? Is it something we want to address? Is it something that we need more documentation on? Is it something we need to hear from the Fire Department, Police Department, and the Public Works Department from? How deep do we want to go on this? Public Works recommended, and the engineer for the town recommended, double stripe the road, and let's see what happens. There's been recommendations about cutting hedges and cutting trees. I'm just repeating everything from the Traffic Safety Committee meeting. Please correct me if I'm wrong here. The question is tonight, will the council entertain this, and will we continue to investigate it further? Is that the question tonight?
I think that's exactly right. That's what the petition is asking for, and so the decision is exactly that. Is the council prepared to do that, or is the council looking for some lesser intervention first, or at all?
Mike, has anyone asked people how they would feel if a gate is put up? Like, the people, how they'd be affected? Like, ask the question the opposite way? Meaning, how would they be affected? Would they, how would they be impacted?
I, I don't know what discussions were had in the course of collecting the signatures. I can tell you that there was, you know, healthy discussion about that at the Traffic Safety Committee meetings. The, the, you know, concern that I've heard most frequently is just the ability to turn left onto Rockingham Road and go north, is people use this signalized intersection at Rockingham Road and Grinear Field Road to turn left. And so, if that doesn't exist, how are they going to do that? That's the most frequently expressed concern that I've heard about, hey, we don't want the gate.
Well, if, of the 127 homes, everybody would be, probably about 120 of those would be south of Grinear Field Road. More or less.
That's about right, yep.
So, 120 homes, let's just say half of them go north and, you know, and want to go left or go right. They would all have to filter out through where the Bacon Barn is now, come to the intersection where North School is, where there is no traffic light, and they would all, if they wanted to go north, they'd all have to make a left.
And if I recall correctly, Mr. Chair, if I may, I heard testimony about people hedging their bets with the, the, it's not signalized, but the crosswalk, "Oh, it's red, so I can go," and almost disregarding pedestrians as well. Correct?
Right. I recall hearing similar concerns as well. I think you were at probably two or three of the same meetings that I was at, Mr. Vice Chairman, and it certainly, I mean, it's, it felt like the same discussion over and over at the Traffic Safety Committee, which is why I'm glad it's here at this point in time. But, you know, it should also be noted that there have been requests for less significant interventions, such as speed tables, speed bumps, et cetera. And those have been looked at from an engineering standpoint. We engaged a consultant to review those options, and so we, we have pros and cons on those different options as well.
All right.
I think we should continue this discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
One of the things that have me concerned is, we also have the senior center up there.
Correct.
Anybody have, these nice folks have come down here. Anybody have any objection to me asking them if they have anything they'd like to say?
Not at all.
No, please. We want to hear from you.
Gentlemen, if you have a person who is a spokesman or something who would like to speak on this, or any of you want to add your input, where the council stands right now is, is, okay, we'll look further at it and see where it goes. In order to, in order to appropriate money, to be able to do something like this, it's just that we don't just have money in the budget to do it. It would be something that we would have to, we would have to get fund by the taxpayers. But, but we're happy to hear from you since you're here. Come on up. Have you, have you been elected the victim?
You both want to come up at the same time?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, it's fun.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, whatever you guys want to do. I mean, we're happy to hear from you. You live up there, but you understand what we're saying, right?
Yep, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So, I'm Steve Kelly. My wife and I live right on the corner of, right at the intersection of Page and Mammoth.
Just the address.
552.
Thank you.
Ryan Mead. I live at 555 Mammoth Road.
We also happen to be related. He's my son-in-law. So, not that that matters. So, as...
Of course it matters.
It matters to me. It may not matter to you.
That's why it matters.
So, as the town manager has stated, we've been dealing with this issue for, we've been in this house for 12 years, and we've probably been to town safety committee, you know, to the Traffic Safety Committee meetings for nearly a decade. And it's been, this has been kicked down the road and kicked around, and, you know...
We're not going to kick anymore.
No, I appreciate that. So, as I listened to what you had to say about the numbers of people in the area and all that, the one thing I have that I struggle with with that is none of those people live right along Mammoth. And that's where the problem is. It's not just the intersection with the accidents. It's that people use that area to cut through from, from, off of Rockingham Road to get to the airport and get back again. So, they're going north and south. They're doing, without exaggeration, 50 miles an hour plus. And Officer Timon in the back would back that up. So, this is a safety issue, because all these houses are 20 feet off the street. So, you know, we settled on the gate, because like Mr. Malaguti said, all the other options that were presented were shot down. Oh, it's too hard to maintain, or it's too, we don't want to do speed bumps. They're not allowed by whatever manual they follow. It's just, you know, it's one thing after another. So, so, you know, and then, you know, the striping was talked about at the last meeting, at the last Traffic Safety, when John Trotter presented all these options. And we discussed it at length then, and we knew it wasn't going to do anything. You know, there are lines painted all over the streets, all over town. We all know it. Does anybody obey speed limits? Do they pay attention to any of that stuff?
Well, I would beg to differ that the enforcement people would say they pay attention when they're around.
They pay attention to, you know, they pay attention to enforcement, but running a stripe down the middle of the road is a waste of money. It was in this case. I was, and I emailed Mike last week, I was passed after dark on Mammoth Road, as I've been three or four times in the course of the last few years. People passed me, because I'm doing the speed limit, and they want to do 50. You know, the only thing the lines did was made it easier for them to pass me in the dark, because they have the nice reflective sides, so they don't have to worry about running off the road. So, something needs to be done, one way or another. I don't know what that is. I thought we were settling on a gate, but, you know, it seems like there's a lot of hesitation in that. I understand that it's inconvenient, it's inconvenient for me. I work down in Belmont. I go out Grinear Field every morning to go get on every turnpike. I'll have to find another way. Another way. I'm okay with that. Other people may not be. But, you know, something's got to be done, other than pushing this off to another meeting. I'm sorry.
I hope you understand. We're not trying to push it off.
I know.
We're getting it for the first time.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And, you know, my frustration carries over from a decade of dealing with this, so I apologize if it's dropping on you, but, you know.
It's dropping in the right place. At least, we'll at least make a decision, because we have to make a decision.
Okay.
And we have the authority to make the decision. So, I do appreciate what you're saying, but it's not going to, it's not going to be a thing where we're just going to push it off. You're going to get a decision one way or the other.
Okay.
That, that much I can promise you.
What we're looking for is a solution. Just to be clear, whether it's a gate or not, something to stop, the biggest issue is the cut-throughs. It's people that don't live in this area that are getting out to their jobs at the airport, or, you know, in, primarily the airport. And it's trucks. We have tractor-trailers that come down there illegally, going, you know, FedEx trucks, they do. They're coming off of the airport, and they come down, they come south, and they come north, because they either don't know or don't care that it's no through trucking. So, and it's, it's, it's a hard enforcement area, because it's a, you know, it's mixed commercial and residential. You've got Wallboard Supply, which is now L&amp;W or whatever it is. So, you have, you know, they have the excuse, "Oh, I'm delivering here, I'm delivering there." There's no way to really, you know, keep track of who's supposed to be there or not. But, we know, because you see people at tractor-trailers that are not supposed to be there. So...
Okay, I understand.
Okay. Appreciate your time.
No, no, very much appreciated. I mean, you do, I mean, folks realize, you don't necessarily have to call 911. You can call 432-1118, because it's the non-emergency number into the police station. If someone's coming down there and you call, they will respond. You know, if someone passes you on a double line, and you have a phone in your car, and you call 603-432-1111, because then it's an emergency. It doesn't go through the 911 system and, you know, and it comes directly into our dispatch center. I've been passed on High Range Road, which is 30 miles an hour by somebody like that. I picked up the phone and called, and they pulled him over by the airport. So, I mean, they're here to serve, and they do a great job. Call them.
Yeah.
Absolutely call them.
No complaints with the police. They've been, they've been good about enforcement and trying to keep this, trying to keep things under control. But, you know, they leave, and 10 minutes later, they're back to the same nonsense. So...
I understand. I understand. I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
As the town manager shared, this has been an issue for a long time. One of the things that I asked for is what the timeframe would be after the line striping to determine whether it was effective or not, so that we can move to Plan B, knowing that it would not be effective. I'm looking for a timeframe.
Sir, I can't give you a timeframe. I mean, so let me give you an example.
Please.
We're in budget season right now. So let's say the, uh, the gate costs $50,000. I'm just using a number. Maybe it's $80,000. I really don't know. We have to go ask the voters for that money. So we have, we have an election in March. So we have an election, as an example. Let's say next meeting, we decided to ask the voters for the money to put a gate up, just as an example. And it got approved in March. We don't get allocation to that money until July 1st. So you can kind of see where I'm going, right?
Not, not for when the solution would be implemented, but when a decision would be made to take an action or inaction by, by this council.
Well, what I'm going to do is, after there's other people that are going to speak, I'm going to ask the council how they want to proceed. And what I'm going to ask them to do is, is that, ask them to direct the town manager to go to the fire department and the police department and the public works department and get us cold, hard facts and numbers and tell us where we stand. Tell us what our alternate solutions are. If we can put these speed things in the road and maybe, and maybe that costs $5,000 and we can do that out of our operating budget. Or, you know, but if we're going to do something as drastic as closing the road, then we're going to notice it, we're going to have public hearings for it. We're going to send, uh, we're going to send letters out to the 127 people and then we're going to listen to what everybody has to say. That's, that's going to take a process. That process is, you know, I don't, could take two to three months? Is that, is that about right?
I think certainly if, if you, yes.
So, so that's kind of how government moves.
Yep.
So, I mean, the good news is, is you'll get an answer at the end. You said you've been going Traffic Safety Committee meetings for years. This isn't going to take years. We're going, we're going to tell you one way or the other, you know, what we, what we can and we can't do. We may come down and say, we're going to do speed bumps even though Public Works doesn't like that and they're going to have to figure it out from a plowing standpoint because we don't want to spend $80,000, you know, of your money, you know, putting up a gate, which is going to change the traffic for everybody in the entire area.
Sure.
So, but, but, you know, we don't know the answer to that. And I understand your frustration because you've been talking about this for years. We, we got it 15 minutes ago.
Right. One thing, just, just to, you know, in the considerations, there are apartments that would like to go in there and, you know, that's going to.
You saw me at the meeting.
Yep. Not everyone was there. That, that's going to add more traffic, so whether it's, it's speed, it's got to be something.
You got my point of view at that meeting, right, in public?
I did. All right, thank you.
No, and it's not that we, we, it's, we get it. I think we get it. At least I get it.
Yep.
You know, we just need to figure out what's, what's the right answer. And, I mean, and we may, you know, we tried striping. Maybe that was wrong, but at least we tried something.
Yes, I just wanted the when.
I can promise you one thing.
For a decision.
As long as I'm sitting here, we're going to progress. We're not going to wait. That's the one promise I can make you.
That's a good one. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to talk about this?
Hello? Eric Moran.
I just need name and address, sir.
528 Mammoth Road.
Thank you, sir.
I was all for the, uh, the gate and I still kind of am, but the issue we have is it's going to create a little bit of a safety issue. I have an alternative that might be even better, it might work for everyone.
Sounds great. We're more than open to it.
I don't know if you can bring that back up to the intersection that we're looking at closing.
Right there. You want the aerial or the?
That's perfect. I don't know if you folks can see that.
Yeah, feel free.
If we could close this side so no one from Granier Field could turn down this road and no one from going north could turn towards the airport.
Could you come to this one instead, actually?
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Yeah, if we could put something here that would block this, it would stop the traffic from coming to the airport, which is everybody's issue. And it also would stop the traffic from the airport coming back down.
So like a no.
If we only closed half of the road, so that way we could get out. Let's say the elderly could still go to the light that's safer for them to go north, but yet stopping all the traffic from going to and from the airport, we closed half of the road. So that way, anybody, that would be safe for everybody to get out of this area to go towards Manchester, let's say. But you can't come back that way. You'd have to come back around or if you're coming back home, but it would stop the traffic.
We'll have to talk to the fire chief because the fire station's right up the street.
I think that would be, that would be the alternate because everyone did.
It's an interesting idea.
I think that would be the only way that would create a safe way of doing what we're trying to do and still let us get out of our neighborhood going north because going by the Bacon Barn is a death trap.
Well, that's kind of what we think too.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we'll have to talk to the fire chief because as you know, you know, the north station is right up there.
Correct.
So, I mean, we'll have to talk to, talk to them.
Maybe we make it so it's not a huge, something that the truck could still drive over if he had to. You know what I mean?
You know what? Every, everything's possible, and, you know, we just need to work our way through it.
Yeah, because they have these things in Cambridge where they have these plastic posts.
Yep.
Where cars can't really drive over them, but a fire truck, it won't even affect them. They'll go right over that thing.
Okay.
So that's, that's a way to avoid all the speed bumps and all this other stuff. And it would, it'd probably solve 90% of our problems.
Okay.
Just an idea.
Hey, listen, it's, all ideas are good ideas. You're welcome. Hi, sir, just name and address, please.
Dave Robbins, 532 Mammoth Road. Kind of wanted to talk about, first talk about the, the double stripe and the lines on Mammoth Road when we put them in. I think, I think there was an unintended consequence. I walk to the rail trail every day, at least once, sometimes twice a day. And usually when I would be walking south towards the rail trail and I'm walking down with the dog, when there was no line in the road, people, as they drove by, would kind of migrate towards the center of the street and, you know, you'd have a little bit more room as a pedestrian. With the double yellow line, drivers are really much less likely to cross the yellow line. So you really got to get off the road. And as we've all discussed, there's not a ton of space up there. You know, you're, you're in someone's front yard walking down. You know, everybody's pretty good about it, obviously, but, you know, there's not a lot of room to operate there. And that, this particular section, it, again, an unintended consequence is probably a little less safe for pedestrians. We don't have a sidewalk or a curb or anything up there. I guess, I guess if you take a step back and you look what we're trying to do here on this section of Mammoth Road, what we're trying to do is make it, make it less convenient for people to use the cut-through on Mammoth Road as opposed to going to Rockingham Road to the light that we spent a ton of money on, right, to give people access to Rockingham Road. My personal thought on it was if we can, if you could slow traffic down enough, whether it's a speed table or, I would think a stop sign at the rail trail is probably a great idea. It's a little bit of a curve there. People aren't always paying attention, especially in the morning. Throw a stop sign there and either a speed table or even another stop sign up at maybe Buckthorne. And you make it so people have to stop twice on that road. You, you know, it'll be easier to go to the light, get to Rockingham Road and head south or north, either way. So that was kind of my, my take on it. Slow them down, make them stop. They'll go the other way unless you live there or, you know, you have another purpose for being up there for L&amp;M.
That's, you know, that's reasonable. Let's look at something like that. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Robyn Stewart. I live at 522 Mammoth, Old Mammoth.
Yes.
I know that, I think, I had spoke to, I think, Dave earlier today, and I guess at one point there was a suggestion that the other end of the road be closed off. But Bacon Barn didn't, they didn't want to do that or for some reason.
I hadn't heard anything about the other end of the road.
Well, I think that's just another option. If you, you have to stop the traffic from just going through. It's, FedEx does it all the time. That light means nothing at 28 any longer because they can bypass that and just go right down the road. They, they really just, and the, the, the paint on the road, the striping just makes it look like we're 28, makes it look like a bigger road for the little cars to go as fast as they want down the next biggest road, which is us now.
Okay.
And I hope that we'll find a solution, not just a lot of no's because this really has been at least 10 years that I've been involved in it.
I can promise you, you'll, you'll get an answer. I don't know what it's going to be. What I can promise you is that you won't get a no. You'll, you, we'll do something. I just don't know what it is. It may be speed tables, it may be the gate, but you'll get a result. And that much I will, this much I can promise you, is I will put it to a vote. And then you'll get an answer one way or the other from the council.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If there's someone else from the public?
No, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Town Manager, has there been any discussion about closing the, as we, she brings up an interesting point, the other end of Mammoth, Old Mammoth Road, near Rockingham Road?
Uh, yes, that is one of the options that was evaluated.
And almost, I mean, it almost makes more sense to do it on that side instead.
Yes, that, that, we, we had our consultant look at that. It was discussed, I believe, at a Traffic Safety Committee meeting. My recollection was not recommended by the traffic consultant based on other, you know, second order effects that that would create.
I'd like to see that report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that report, Mike.
Yep, yep.
I mean, if anything, I mean, it, it'd be also be interesting to know if we could do, I don't know how much the, um, what it would be costing for the traffic study of, I don't know, the, the direction that we're seeing, a lot of the speed offenders and the crash, uh, accident-crashing offenders are coming from. But, I mean.
Right, so the PD.
Very well, they could be coming from Rockingham Road more than from Granier Field.
Right. The PD does have very good accident information about, you know, frequency and cause in, at this intersection.
That'd be wonderful to have.
The, it just should be noted that the decision that the Traffic Safety Committee took not to, you know, move forward or continue to look at making this a one-way had nothing to do with the Bacon Barn.
Okay, so so far what I've heard is we're looking for accident data. I personally need to know, and I personally need to understand what a speed table is.
Yes.
So that I, so I can visualize that.
Oh, I think we need to, John, I think we need to see what all those options are.
I was just going to.
Flashing, I mean, there's a bunch of options there.
Yeah, the stop, the multiple stop signs was an option.
So, so the stop sign one is interesting. The actual cost of a, of an Omnicom gate. So folks, what an Omnicom gate is, is that when emergency vehicles come or when the plowing, or when they, they come to plow, is they'll have a device to raise the gate and lower the gate and everything. They'll be able to do that so they can go through.
The other option, Mr. Chairman, was to make this a four-way stop, as I think it once was.
It was once.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that, I never understood why it stopped being a four-way stop, but that's just me. The, um, so, and the other thing was, is, um, I believe the last number I heard about putting a signal for an intersection was somewhere between 250 and $350,000 for an actual signalized intersection.
Right, and the discussion.
Not including any type of landscape work.
That's, I've, I've heard similar numbers. And the discussion as well at the Traffic Safety Committee recognized that we have, I think, two, at least two issues here and they're, they're probably have different solutions. The issue is the accidents in the intersection and then the issue of speed along the corridor. I think that, you know, fixing the intersection issue doesn't necessarily, although it could, depending on what the solution is, fix the speed issue along the whole length of the road.
Could you please speak to the, if the councils are in with it, can we please speak to the police chief and have a directed patrol sent up there?
Yes.
So that we can, we can see what's going on?
The other thing too, John, is there are other options? I'd like to see reports from the police and I'd like to get the police and chief and the fire chief here. I would like to see the accident reports at Old Mammoth and 28. That intersection and also the reports at Granier Field Road and Old Mammoth Road.
And can, um.
What about speed guns? Are we able to have them go out there for speed guns to actually trace how fast people are really going?
Well, we can find, we can, we can put, well, it's late in the season.
Well, and at least get some data on it.
It's late in the season for the cables.
They may have it.
Well, not for cables, but I meant, they have the guns, right?
Well, let's, let's go find out. They may have all this.
Yeah, they may have it.
Right.
This is the first time it's come to us.
So can you, um, all right, so our next meeting is November 20th. It has, we have a number of public hearings and everything on that already. Can you put this on the December 4th agenda so that we can, we can revisit this on December 2? December 4th?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So folks, that's the first, yep, sure. That's the first meeting that, our next meeting is all budgets and everything, so that would be the first meeting we really have time. Please, name and address, please.
Melissa Martin, 537 Mammoth. So I did, I just, hearing this discussion, I just want to make sure that we're being very careful that the reason that we're all here is not necessarily, like, putting a four-way stop or dealing heavily with that intersection is not really the issue. So I, I live at 537 Mammoth, which is directly next to the senior center. I actually had to write a formal letter to the bus company a couple of years ago because my children were expected to cross Mammoth Road and wait on the opposite side. And in the wintertime, more than once, they had to sort of launch themselves into a swamp because cars were coming so fast past them. And I had to write to the bus company to ask them to change the stop to the other side of the road. I also lost a beloved pet last fall. And one of my neighbors was there and saw it happen and the person actually beeped at my cat, froze her in the middle of the road and mowed her down anyway. I think that the double yellow line that is painted has actually had the opposite effect because now it does make it seem, instead of like more of a rural road, it makes it seem like more of a city road. And people are really misunderstanding the, the purpose of that. What we need to do is, I mean, I, I love the idea of closing it down at, you know, Granier Boulevard there, like where the turnoff is above the, right there. That would be fantastic because that would alleviate any issues of people having to go around and take a left where there's no light, which is a big problem. But the, the intersection is not nearly the issue that the pass-through is. And I think that that's very, very important to note. Like, I don't want to get lost in, oh, yeah, let's put a four-way stop at the intersection. That will do us no good. You know, when I moved there, it was an unpaved road. It was bad. When they paved it, I mean, I, my bedroom faces the road. I lie there sometimes at night and I hear people going easily highway speeds down that street. So it's, it's, it is, you know, everyone's repeating the same thing. It's a very big problem. I personally have been affected in significant ways. So I can only imagine, you know, I came home one night, somebody had mowed down somebody's mailbox. Literally just speeding down the street out of control. So it's the, it's the speed and the pass-through that needs to be dealt with much more than the actual intersection itself. And I just wanted to assert that.
First of all, I can tell you the police chief's watching. I just got a text from him. It says he has all the accident data and everything and he is sending another directed patrol up there. So he's actually watching and he's just heard everything that you just said.
Okay, I've called the police a couple of times and spoken with them on the dispatch number, not 911. And, and they've been very agreeable to coming up and doing patrol up there and increasing patrol up there around the bus situation that happened and, and I, you know, and I've had conversations with them. The problem is they can't be there 24/7, 100% of the time for months and months on end. That can't be expected. And the minute that patrol stops, the regulars that are going through, going, going to work every day, they, they know and they just pick up their speed again.
Oh, again, I, first of all, I'm sorry about your pet.
Thank you.
I do promise, we're, we're going to do something. I just don't know what it is. The good news is, is that it's got everybody's attention.
Good.
So.
Awesome.
So thank you.
Thanks.[1747.44]
Yes, Dave?
There's more residents?
Nope.
Um, I just wanted to shed a little bit of light on, yeah, some of the conversation I had today, and, uh, some of the things I've heard at the traffic safety committee myself. Uh, being a department that has to maintain things, the gates obviously are problematic, uh, in the wintertime, and perhaps even so much for a fire department that needs to respond in there. Um, I do like the idea of the restricted one-end, uh, you know, for, so that people can't take the left at the end, but, um, I think the fire department can probably weigh in better on that. I can, we, plowing snow, we can work around it, it would be a problem, but we can figure it out. Um, the, the more logical, uh, but perhaps more expensive option in my mind that would satisfy a lot of the concerns for the cut-through, cause the majority of the cut-through is people that are traveling north, either heading over to the airport, uh, to avoid the light, uh, would be to put not a gate, but a cul-de-sac at the end of Mammoth Road at Rockingham Road. I, Mike, if you could zoom in on that area.
Zoom in down by Butrick Village?
Yeah, no, you're going the wrong way.
No.
Yeah, right down in there.
Down here.
I mean, zoom right in on that. Um, you know, whether if we have the right-of-way there to do, or land take or whatnot, and the reason why you'd need a cul-de-sac is because what it would do would, would any of the, the, the trucks that need to deliver to some of the commercial business up there, they would clearly then have to go to the light, take a left at the light, come up and then come back, and then come down Mammoth Road. Should they not wanna go back out the way that they came in, and decide to take a right, if we dead-end it or have a gate, now you've got a serious situation where tractor-trailer trucks are backing up, or perhaps they even try to go down the narrower stretch of road that the Bacon Barn is in. So we would obviously have to have a cul-de-sac in that area. Um, whether or not that can be done, could be another option, but it's certainly, uh, gonna be a more costly one. Um, and then you would obviously have to change the, you know, the, uh, the description of the road and what have you. And to answer the speed humps, speed bumps, uh, situation.
Also have a force beam right there, don't we?
Yeah, so there's, I, I, I think there's a pump station as well, and, and what have you, so. Um, but it's something that, that, that could be looked at, and I believe it may even have been, so, um, I don't wanna speak to that, but it, it obviously could be fairly costly. But it would solve a lot of that cut-through crisis, it would solve not having a mechanical gate that can break, and battery's gonna get changed, and things of that nature. It can solve a lot of response issues, plowing problems. Um, if we had to call, if we cul-de-sacked it, or did anything, it would be at that end. Um, the other thing in speed bumps, they are not allowed by law, um, in, in, in roadways and right-of-ways. You can, i- in certain situations, if they meet the criteria, as I understand it, you can have, uh, speed humps or slash speed tables. And the difference with that is, is what it, you, you need to allow is you need to have enough span to allow for a car to enter up onto it, plane out, and then come back down off of it. So you're not just going ba-bang over a speed bump, you have to slow down. Um, there's gonna be a lot of signage for that, a lot of markings for that, uh, so that people don't come down there and hit that thing doing fifty miles an hour, and they land in your living room. Um, there needs to be perhaps lighting for that, and, and whatnot. Um, and I will tell you that, you know, the tractor-trailers that do go over that, or landscape trailers, uh, make quite a bit of noise. So I just wanna bring that to the attention, that if you're advocating for that, or if that is the decision that we decide to do, when landscape trailers go over those things, ungodly, the, the tailgates are rattling, the equipment's rattling, and likewise on the, uh, tractor-trailer units, the doors, the latches, they, you know, you get a lot of, a lot of noise, so. Just wanna make sure that everybody understands what they're talking about when we're, you know, when you're making these types of decisions.
Do you know where the CVS is, and the Chinese restaurant is on, on South Willow? And then there's a road that goes up to Memorial?
Mm-hmm.
Are those speed tables?
Those are speed tables. Yep, in fact, there's a neighborhood back that cuts through from Brown Ave up over to South Willow, which I drive over a thousand times, my mother-in-law lives down there. Well, I don't drive that much, cause I don't see my mother-in-law that much, but, well, on the occasion, I go to visit my mother-in-law. Um, they have them. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, they're scoured quite a bit, they have quite a bit of them through that neighborhood. Um, I'm sure it was a similar situation, just like that, like, just like this, where people, you know, they wanna avoid the lights on South Willow, uh, and, I'm sorry, Brown Ave, down in that area. It cuts from South Willow over to Brown Ave, over by the, uh, uh, around the backside of the airport and the post office, correct?
So you folks know what we're talking about, so you can go see what speed tables look like? Now, now that I know what a speed table is?
And, and the biggest, the biggest complaint that, the biggest complaint that people talk about is the, is the, the, the trailers that go over them, especially the landscape trailers, box trailers and things of that nature, cause your tailgates, everything's rattling when they're going over those things. So, you know, um, if one gets located right in front of your house, and you're that close to the road, then that's some of the things that you may be experiencing in the middle of the night, or during the course of the day.
Well, and I think the other thing you may forgot to mention is, during the wintertime, plow guys may not fully be aware of them, and may dig them up.
Oh, we'll know where they are, trust me. You, you, you hit them once, uh, yeah, but they, but the problem is.
They're gonna take some damage over time.
They, they scour quite a bit, the, the plows are angled, so they don't go over them, you know, square enough. So they get scoured a lot, so there'll be a lot of future maintenance requirements, and sometimes we'll have to dig them out and repave the approaches and what have you. Uh, they should be painted, you know, the bright yellow, uh, or, or striped, you know, um, with diagonal-type patterns, so that you see them. Uh, you see them extensively, if you wanna see a lot of them, uh, you can go to any college campus. They, they use them quite a bit on college campuses, U and H has a lot of them, uh, Dover area and stuff like that, so you can go up there and, and take a look at them. Um, and I, I, I say, in, in U and H too, uh, they don't paint them well at all, and. Been, been a while since I roamed the campus of U and H, uh, quite some time, and I didn't remember them last time I went through there. Uh, they caught, they caught me, they caught me by surprise, so, um, but yeah, but those are, those are typical uses that you see, uh, in, in, in dense areas like this, so.
I will say, I do really like his idea of the cul-de-sac at the bottom of Old Mammoth Road.
Well, I, I like to take maintenance out of things, uh, keep things simple, use the KISS method, you know? Um, and, uh, you know, if we don't have moving parts like mechanical gates, and, um, and we eliminate the cut-through, um, you know, as long as we provide an ability for somebody to safely turn around, like, oh, I forgot this is a dead end, they turn around, they go back out the other way. Um, it will force a lot more traffic, obviously, for the people that are up at that intersection, uh, at Page and Grunier Field, that all of your traffic that's, is gonna come now, past your house and then back out that way. But again, uh, probably at a much lower rate of speed, and it'll certainly eliminate the cut-throughs, so.
Alright, so basically what we've heard is, all options are on the table, we need some costs associated to them, we need to hear from multiple department heads, and we need to try to put that on the agenda for, not try, put it on the agenda for, uh, December twenty-fourth.
Will do.
And can they send me the, uh, traffic study, please? Same here, please?
Same.
Don't worry, Tony, I'm gonna talk about the electronic sign. Um, anything else, folks? Yes?
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, one way or another, we're gonna get, uh, we're gonna get to an answer, it just may not be very pretty. Process, that is.
It can't be, luckily you've been having a car land in your front yard six minutes a year, so.
I, I hear you.
True.
I absolutely hear you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next item, uh, real quickly here, approval of minutes for October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, as presented. I'll take a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Well, as a favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Obstain.
Minutes are approved within one extension. Okay, so, other business. Um, can we get a cost on this electronic sign thing, and find out how much that is, going here into budgets?
Certainly.
I think the cost of the one at the, we probably get, can get a cost for whatever the school paid, which was like forty or fifty thousand dollars?
My, my, I thought it was less.
I thought it was thirty, is what.
I, I, I have no idea. Everything's fifty thousand dollars tonight. It's inflation.
I thought it was closer to twenty, actually, but.
Well, you know, I mean, that might be, I mean, knowing Tony, it's probably more like a fifty thousand.
I bet you Tony already has a number. Tony, do you already have a number?
It was twenty for the sign, but the base was, uh, pro bono, uh, what do you call it?
Donated.
Any kind donation.
See, I was right.
So, there is another cost to it, there's always, there's a sign.
But we can work on it.
So anyway, if you could look into that, please?
Will do.
That'd be great. Um, I have liaison reports from the council, anything?
I have, I have two.
Yes, sir.
Um, budget committee had a really good tour of DPW, thank you, Dave, if you're still here. Um, uh, the budget committee got to touch and feel some of these trucks. I think a lot of them were, uh, surprised at how well they do at maintaining these trucks, and how much use these trucks have. So I think, uh, thank you, Dave, for taking the budget committee out there. Um, and then tomorrow night, utility committee meeting, if anyone would like to attend, seven o'clock.
And tomorrow night, school board meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Uh, I was not able to attend, uh, last week's budget, uh, planning board meeting, uh, but I understand that we approved our plans for the Tesla facility, is that correct, Kelly?
That's correct.
So I think that'll be a great step forward for the town, and putting us further on the map.
So be prepared, a number of ordinances are coming forward for our approval and for public hearings, so be prepared that those are coming. Um, alright, town manager report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, uh, recognize the hard work that, uh, the finance director primarily, the assistant town manager, all of the department heads, and all of our support staff put into preparing for, uh, the kickoff that occurred on Saturday. It was, uh, it's, as you know, quite a heavy lift, and, uh, a lot of hard work that's taken place over the last month, month and a half. Um, and, uh, from my standpoint, even though the news isn't as good as we might like it to be, uh, it went off flawlessly, so I'm, I'm grateful for all of their hard work.
Yeah, and the coffee was strong, I needed, I needed strong coffee. Um, thank you for that. Um, anything for you, Kelly?
I'll be brief, Mr. Chair, um, just to reiterate, as you mentioned, I'll be bringing forward zoning amendments to the planning board this Wednesday, relating to the twenty-eight and one oh two overlay districts, um, a use amendment, and the floodplain management ordinance. And lastly, the town manager and I, um, spent our time at two economic development conferences last week, both focusing on state and regional economic development. Uh, Lunat area was highlighted, uh, and given high praise for the New Balance project yet again, and the Pettingill Road area. Um, and the New Balance groundbreaking is tentatively scheduled for November twentieth.
Hopefully it doesn't snow. Um, anything else from the council?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just wanna chime in real quick, uh, I wanna give a bit of praise to Justin. I've been really impressed with his knowledge of all the rules and laws for the state, for all the financial and budgeting, uh, items, upon how we can go about things, the different ways we can do them, how we can really, you know, create the different situations that we need to, to be able to spend the money that we would like to do so, and I think, you know, every time that I have another conversation with him, I'm just learning something more and new about how we can go about our process, and I, I'm just really impressed with Justin's knowledge of the whole process.
Anything further? So, the motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
Ladies and gentlemen, our next meeting is November twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. I would suggest you come here for, prepared for a, uh, rather lengthy meeting, cause we have many things to discuss. With that, um, we are adjourned.